Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. This council session will now come to order. Will all members take your seats? All visitors, please retire outside the rails. And please take all sidebar conversations out of the council chambers. I also would like to ask all those who are present to please place your cell phones to silent or vibrate. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Reverend Dr. Marcia Brown Woodard. She is the president of the Baptist Pastors and Ministers Conference of Philadelphia and Vicinity, and assistant pastor of the Saints Memorial Baptist Church in Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania. She is here today as the guest of council member Isaiah Thomas. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Council President Johnson, council member Thomas, to all the other conference council members, let us pray. Good morning, God. For the gift of this day, we give you thanks. For the dangers, both seen and unseen, that you have kept from us, we are grateful. I come today, God, as others have come before, to ask for guidance for this body of legislative leaders, praying that you will continue to place in them the desire to work not for their own glory or for their own advancement, but to do their work in such a manner that the people of Philadelphia are blessed. God, we live in challenging times, times like none other. And so I pray that you will remind them that they need to have courage like Esther. And remember, they have been elected for this time to face the challenges that they now will experience and to make a difference in this age. I pray that you will give them wisdom and understanding, like the sons of Issachar, that they may be clear of the ways that their decisions impact the lives of ordinary people, and they will have the courage to stand with and for the least. You know them, God, in ways that I do not. And so I, like others who have come before me, entrust them into your hands and pray that you will use them today and every day in ways that will bring you glory and that indeed will strengthen this great city, that it might be a shining light for the world. We ask it in a name that is above all names, that of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
The chair thanks the Reverend for the invocation. Council will be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 23, 2025. The chair recognizes council member Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the Journal for the meeting.
It has been moved in property second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 23, 2025 stand approved. All those in favor will indicate by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for council member Bass.
The chair thanks the council member. Leave will be granted. The chair recognizes council member Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. There are no requests for leave of absence on behalf of the minority.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in property second that the legislative matters stated by Councilman Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. At this time, the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, who will present a resolution honoring the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its 33rd Annual African-American Children's Book Fair. Where Vanessa Lloydskambadi and those accompanying her, please join the council member at the podium. Joining council member and Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson will be council member Dr. Nina May, Councilman Maketi Lizada, Councilmember Mark Squiller, Councilman Jamie Gaultier, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, and Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you to each of my colleagues who have joined us this morning. It is certainly my humble honor and privilege to again present the resolution on behalf of the 33rd Annual African-American Children's Book Fair here in the city of Philadelphia, which will be held this Saturday, February 1st, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Pennsylvania Convention Center. And for those of you who have been in chambers for some time, you remember that my mentor and former boss, Councilmember Blondell Reynolds Brown, faithfully introduced this resolution every single year, and I am proud to continue in that tradition. And whereas books can change lives, and the African-American Children's Book Fair provides a unique opportunity to celebrate diverse stories that enlighten, enrich, and empower young readers, this family-friendly event is packed with activities designed to spark a lifelong love of reading. The African-American Children's Book Project is dedicated to developing and encouraging young people to expand their horizons through literature. And whereas the African-American Children's Book Project, which was founded in 1992 by Vanessa Lloydskambadi, let's give her a round of applause. The African-American Children's Book Project was created to promote and preserve children's literature written by and about Black Americans. The African-American Children's Book Fair has put Philadelphia on the map as a literary destination for children's books. Book lovers travel from around the country to come and experience the Philadelphia literary magic. In fact, the African-American Children's Book Fair has a significant event in the literary history of the United States and...
Whereas, the work of the African-American Children's Book Project is in response to numerous studies that show that children who read outside of their normal school coursework tend to excel in other aspects of their lives. The African-American Children's Book Project emphasizes in their programs for children, preschool to young adult, the importance of providing access and choice of what they read. The African-American Children's Book Project promotes outside reading by expounding the selection of books that students gain access to. Adults who attended as children now bring their children. They credit exposure to books received at the book fair for helping them learn Black American history and... Whereas, the African-American Children's Book Fair is one of the oldest and largest single-day events for African-American children's books in the country, with an average yearly attendance of more than 3,500. It is a true book fair that brings national award-winning authors and illustrators for children pre-K to young adult to Philadelphia. These presenters are American Library Association and New York Times bestselling authors and illustrators. They are the stars of the book industry, who have produced some of the best books for our generation and...
And whereas, rich or poor, no one leaves empty-handed, as books themselves are placed at a level where they are more affordable. The legendary Literacy Row gives away free-of-charge posters, bookmarks, postcards, and resource information on literary trends. Their educators' book giveaway program allows teachers and librarians to receive free books of our guest presenters to use in the classroom or libraries. And whereas Vanessa Lloydskambadi, the founder of the literary media and publisher, publishing consultant, a publishing relations marketing firm that specializes in publishing with a focus on Black books, she knows the art of the pitch for over 30 years. The firm has served as a literary consultant to authors, illustrators, consumers, librarians, booksellers, educators, publishers, and corporate entities interested in literacy. The literary is known in the industry as the go-to firm to produce award-winning publicity and marketing campaigns for Black books. She is one of only 10 Black literary publicity professionals that works with all of the major publishers. The organization's virtual events have attracted a global audience. In addition to her career, Vanessa Lloydskambadi is also a native to Philadelphia. Her education also includes a degree from Temple University Honors Program, where she is a graduate cum laude and...
Whereas, the premiere of eight new books will take place at the event. This exciting feature is joined by a host of opportunities to meet and speak with renowned authors and illustrators, the likes of whom appear on national bestsellers and literary honorees. In total, 35 nationally-known literary creators will be present at this event. And whereas, to kick off Black History Month, the African-American Children's Book Project honors people in the community who open the pages of books and keep the literary flames ablaze, not only in Philadelphia, but also across the country and...
Whereas, the AACBP's year-round initiatives emphasize the transformative power of books and literacy through book fairs and book signings, workshops to encourage engagement with literature, I Read to See Me, author, illustrator, virtual and in-school visits, guidance for families on building home libraries, advocacy campaigns to promote Black American children's literature globally, resources and trends to support youth literature for parents, educators, and librarians. Black history is seen through the lens of Black children's picture books and... Whereas Stephen Briggs is a community development professional with over 30 years of diversified experience in the financial services industry. He was born and raised in Philadelphia. Mr. Briggs is a vice president within the Philanthropy and Community Impact Group at Wells Fargo. In this capacity, he manages the strategic allocation of Wells Fargo's philanthropic resources in Pennsylvania and Delaware. He is an active member of Philadelphia and Delaware-based nonprofit boards and advisory committees that includes the regional foundation, Reach Riverside Development Corporation, and Philadelphia LISC and...
Whereas Jamar Nicholas is an award-winning artist and educator, born and raised in Philadelphia, and from an early age strived to become a cartoonist. He has taught and lectured on the topic of comics creation at numerous institutions, dedicating his career to empowering young people to create their own cartoons and comics. His books are published by Scholastic Books, an international publisher of children's books. Mr. Nicholas was also honored with the Dwayne McDuffie Award for Diversity and Glyph Comics Award for Best Writer of 2018 and... Whereas Jamar Nicholas was also a writer and columnist for Draw Magazine, the how-to source for comic book and animation professionals, and was a host of the Comic Book Diner podcast focusing on the business of comics. He currently is the producer and co-host of Pencil to Pencil, a podcast on the business of creativity. A mainstay of the cartooning world, Jamar also holds a board seat in the National Cartoonist Society, as well as serving as chapter chair for Philadelphia and...
Whereas, Jamela Thompson Bigelow, MSED, is a Philadelphia-based educator and children's book author, a curriculum writer and former English teacher. She has educated children and teens in traditional and alternative learning settings for 15 years. Her picture books and short stories, which feature young Black and Muslim characters, have been recognized as the best in children's literature by Time Magazine, Read Across America, and NPR. And whereas, she is published by four of the largest publishers in the world: Harry N. Abrams, Random House, HarperCollins, and Simon &amp; Schuster's Salam Reed's. Founded in 2016, Salam Reed's is an imprint that celebrates joy, vibrancy, and a variety in stories of Muslims' lives. These books are widely popular across the United States and...
Whereas, the free 2025 African-American Children's Book Fair will take place on Saturday, February 1st, 2025, live in person at the Pennsylvania Convention Center from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And whereas, council has no doubt that this year's iteration of the book fair will exceed all expectations inspired by its history of excellence. We encourage all of our city's residents, young and old alike, to discover for the first time or once again the wonders to be found in the pages of a good book. Now therefore be it.
Resolved by the council of the city of Philadelphia that we hereby honor the African-American Children's Book Project on the occasion of its 33rd Annual African-American Children's Book Fair. Further resolved that engrossed copies of this resolution be presented to the African-American Children's Book Project, further evidencing the sincere respect of this legislative body. Thank you very, very much.
The chair recognizes Vanessa Lloydskambadi for remarks.
Thank you, Council President Kenyala Johnson and Catherine Gilmore Richardson, who continues the tradition started by former council member Blondell Reynolds Brown to kick off Black History Month by honoring those who made contributions to the literary fiber of this city. And also, I wanted to acknowledge, at least I forget because I don't want the sandman to come after me from the Apollo. I wanted to acknowledge how grateful we are at the African-American Children's Book Fair of Councilman Johnson, Catherine Gilmore Richardson, council members Anthony Phillips, Curtis Jones, Councilman Cindy Bass, Jamie Gaultier, Kendura Books, and Jeffrey Young, whose financial support has enabled the African-American Children's Book Fair to offer our children something that is taken for granted in schools throughout this country: the opportunity to meet the stars of the children's book world, the opportunity to meet someone who looks like themselves, and the opportunity to have access to books that are encouraging, empowering, and enlightening. And of course, the opportunity to dispel the myth that Black people do not read and do not buy books. I could spend hours talking about attempts to silence these voices, but I've chosen to spotlight in these brief moments on the wonderful things happening in the world of publishing. At the book fair this year, the American Library Association announced on Monday its 2025 Best Book Winners. This is all the books that were published for children in 2024. Five of those people will be in Philadelphia. Four of the 2025 NAACP Image Award nominees will be in Philadelphia. And of course, people will be trying to get on the New York Times list, and our children get to meet those folks. In fact, the woman who's number six on the New York Times Best Children's Book will be in Philadelphia. All of these honors and lists is an indication that Black stories are being read by the overall book community. There are more books than ever before being produced about Black people. Last year, here in council, I introduced you to the Ice Crew Man, who was the richest man, Black man, in Philadelphia in the 1800s. And at least we forget Mae Reeves, who owned a hat shop on South Street. She was the first Black woman to own a hat shop on South Street. And she used to go to Paris and New York to buy the things that she needed for her hats in the 40s. So this year, we're not going to disappoint the audience. James Earl Jones, there's a book called Oh, Two Grapefruit, is about how he was a stutterer. There's also Monique Duncan, who talks about how the women in slavery used to braid stories in their head to remind people that there was a way out of that, and it taught them how to follow a path to freedom. And these participants who are coming to this year come from all corners of the earth because Philadelphia is on the map as a destination for literacy. In fact, Wikipedia listed, and they're listing of children's books from 1700 to present, the African-Americans founding in 1992. And of course, some homegrown talent, you might know this name. You might know somebody that knows this person, Don Chavoo, whose second book has received high acclaim, Stacy Woodson. And the two people who are in back of me, Jamar Nicholas and Jamela Thompson Bigelow. I want to, this book fair started in 1992, and I went to the Regency Room in John Wanamaker, and I said, "Girl, they gone, but you're gonna still be here." So I want to remind people how important the work that we are doing. It is not just about a book. It's about showing kids, young boys, when they read a book, that they can be the hero in this story. Young girls, when they read a book, that their stories are powerful. A little girl who wants to study ballet and she doesn't look like a ballerina, there's a book for her. And so I'm gonna close my remarks by letting, I know we're not supposed to do this, but you know, I like breaking rules. Each person who's being on is gonna say one sentence why it's important to read Black books. Come on, y'all. Step up. Hurry up.
Briefly.
Black books are very critical to our young people, to open up a lot of doors that we may have thought were walls at one point.
Excuse me, just real quick.
Black books...
Excuse me, excuse me. Yeah, just real quick. So we know what author is coming up to the microphone. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'm Jamela Thompson Bigelow. I want to say Black books matter, because no matter what anyone tells you, our stories are foundational to the fabric of this nation.
Good morning. Stephen Briggs, and Black books are important because representation is important.
Preserve a legacy and buy a Black book.
Thank you, Vanessa, for being consistent on addressing the issue of literacy and academic excellence. Let's give another round of applause, everyone. Let's give another round of applause, everyone. At this time, the Chair recognizes Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Rich. Whoa, 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 whoa. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver to the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Would the Chief Clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in our possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body the following proposed. An ordinance repealing, I'm sorry. No, no, no. My apologies. An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania a perpetual right and easement on, over and across, a certain tract of land at the intersection of Southampton Road and Roosevelt Boulevard for roadway and related improvements under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Streets Commissioner on behalf of the city to own and maintain a bridge to be constructed by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, PennDOT, to carry Byberry Road over certain railroad tracks between Evan Street and Worthington Road and placing said bridge carrying Byberry Road on the city plan pursuant to the terms of an agreement between the city and PennDOT, all under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing the opening of a right-of-way to the public on land near the intersection of the southeastern side of Bath Street and southwestern side of Victoria Streets, all being land owned by the city. Council President, there are no further communications from the mayor.
Thank you very much. The messages from the mayor will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Happy early Black History Month. I have two privileged resolutions for introduction today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring the Juvenile Law Center on its fiftieth anniversary.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Office of Clean and Green for their exceptional contributions toward a cleaner, greener Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you again, Council President. Today I offer two privileged resolutions, one of which is on behalf of Councilmember Bass.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspections and the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on enforcement against drug paraphernalia stores.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Sid Booker, a Philadelphia businessman and community icon who left an indelible mark on the North Philadelphia, on North Philadelphia and beyond.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gauthier.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have three bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash three oh three of the Philadelphia Code entitled Common Procedures and Requirements by authorizing the Zoning Board of Adjustment to Condition Zoning Approval Upon Provision of Affordable Housing Under Certain Terms and Conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And an ordinance amending section fourteen dash six oh four of the Philadelphia Code, accessory uses and structures, to modify certain restrictions with respect to accessory dwelling units and making conforming technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And an ordinance amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, of Title Four of the Philadelphia Code, the Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, by defining affordable housing projects and establishing specific application and permitting procedures for such projects, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to seven one nine South Fifty-first Street, eleven twenty-four South Fifty-sixth Street, and twelve eighteen North Forty-first Street in the Third Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank Fee Simple Title to such properties pursuant to section sixteen dash four oh five of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. Nothing today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing today, sir.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ruland Dow.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. I have two bills for introduction today.
Thank you. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance amending chapter nine dash eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to establish requirements related to security deposits for residential rentals and establishing remedies for violations, all under certain terms and conditions.
This resolution will be placed on today's final. This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And an ordinance amending chapter nine dash eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to establish requirements related to fees charged by landlords to individuals applying for residential tenancy, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsi Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have nothing today.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Y.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Patricia Riley, SEPTA's first female conductor.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Council President, I have no bills and resolutions today and I also would like to be marked as I on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you very much. She'll be duly noted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I have two privileged resolutions today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the two privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing the rise of cardiovascular disease as the world's leading cause of death and disability and supporting the recognition of February twenty twenty-five as American Heart Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring January as National Poverty in America Awareness Month and recognizing the severe conditions of poverty that many Americans experience day to day.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Council President. I have one non-privileged resolution alongside our colleague, Councilmember Bass.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the non-privileged resolution?
A non-privileged resolution declaring twenty twenty-five as the Year of Cooperatives in Philadelphia and calling on the City of Philadelphia to explore all options to support the development and resilience of local cooperative businesses.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Triscoll.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have one bill and one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolution?
An ordinance authorizing the opening of a right-of-way to public land near the intersection of the southeastern side of Bath Street and the southwestern side of Victoria Streets, being land owned by the city.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Technology and Information Services to hold hearings regarding the operation of Philadelphia three-one-one non-emergency hotline and its engagement with city departments.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolution.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of fifteen twenty-five South Ninth Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one four seven, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of twenty forty-nine East Hagerd Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one two five, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee?
And an ordinance authorizing various encroachments in the vicinity of sixteen twenty-five South Second Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one four eight, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to appropriate committee? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, as the Lunar New Year in celebrating the cultural and historical significance of Philadelphia's Asian, American, and Pacific Islander communities.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next is reports from committees. Being that there are no reports from committees today, we will now go for the consideration of the calendar. The next order of business is the consideration of calendar. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two five zero zero one four, two five zero zero one eight, two five zero zero one nine, two five zero zero two one, two five zero zero two seven, two five zero zero two nine, and two four zero eight one seven. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. Two four one zero nine seven, two four one one four four, two five zero zero two two, two five zero zero three zero, two four zero four two seven, two four zero three zero four dash A, and two four zero six six five.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Kalia Adams to my left, outside the rails of the chambers. Once you have signed up, you will be called in an order which your name appears on the signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be three minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the three-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to please conclude your remarks. Once three minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the Sergeant-at-Arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the rights pursuant to our roles of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I will now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
We have Kate Perez, May Reverend Dr. Michelle Simmons, Malcolm Musgrove, and Vincent Scavion also make their way to the podium.
I'm Kate Perez. And Israeli forces shot and killed a two-year-old Laila Al-Khatib after a sniper shot her in the head during the family dinner in the West Bank this week. Families trapped by military checkpoints and unlawful borders for years were finally able to return to the north of Gaza, finding rubble and weapons made in the U.S. Many, it's possible that many of them have come from this state. Roads where people had to walk barefoot for hours were torn up by Israeli bulldozers and U.S.-made bomb remnants. Day and Zimmerman being the primary supplier of the top three most-used munitions by the Israeli army, it's likely that these were sold in our city. I condemn Trump for inviting the internationally-wanted war criminal Netanyahu back to the U.S. for a meeting on Tuesday, where our shameful Congress will stand on their feet to give him another standing ovation for his genocide. In a country ripe with the housing crisis and desperate for debt relief, Trump's first acts as president have been to pardon the people who tried to storm the Capitol, lift sanctions on violent settlers in the West Bank, and reallow two-thousand-pound bombs to be sent to Israel. The Mark eighty-four can form a crater fifty feet wide and thirty-six feet deep with a lethal fragmentation to a radius of four hundred feet. General dynamics, just like Day and Zimmerman in our city, continues to sell weapons to an apartheid occupation that indiscriminately drops bombs on refugee camps and hospitals. Dr. Hassan Abu Sophia is still being held hostage in the SDE team in torture camp by an occupying state we continue to partner with. No matter how many kindergartens they bomb, humans they starve, or hostages they torture. We should have cut ties with the apartheid state years ago. Just like the United States has broken every treaty with Native Americans, the occupation violates every ceasefire agreement they make, dropping white phosphorus on Lebanon and sniping a fifteen-year-old boy after, hours after the ceasefire, and then shooting as his father as he tried to grab the body. Trump, his son-in-law, Israeli politicians, and Keller Williams see a humanitarian disaster and call Gaza potential beachfront property. He passes laws to allow for the detainment of immigrants at detention centers that have histories of human trafficking, sexual abuse, and forced hysterectomies. ICE is raiding our homes and our businesses without warrants, holding Americans hostage for hours, while using language to dehumanize immigrants, calling them illegal, calling them aliens, while announcing a thirty-thousand-person concentration camp at Guantanamo Bay, then floating the idea of deporting American citizens to be maintained in a foreign land for a very small fee. He's also making a point to deport anti-Israel students, which is weird that he didn't put America first. We need an arms embargo. We have to fight against Nazis. Fuck ICE. Free Palestine.
Reverend Dr. Michelle Simmons, Malcolm Musgrove, Vincent Scavion, and Jeremy Blattstein.
Dr. Simmons, just before you start, I just want to ask for all those participating on public comment and those who are participating in this council session, please remain a level of decorum regarding language. We welcome all comments as relates to public comment, but please refrain from any words of... Swatch your language, that's all. Period. Dr. Simmons, please begin.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm Reverend Dr. Michelle Simmons, the founder of Why Not Prosper for the last twenty-three years. I've been working tirelessly to support the formerly incarcerated women in our community. Today I stand before you with a message of progress, urgency, and partnership. Three years ago in twenty twenty-two, Why Not Prosper alongside of the SWAG team conducted participatory action study called Breaking All Racial Bearers. This was a year-long effort where we interviewed justice partners, community orgs, incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals. We also engaged in court watching, professional interviews, and held focus groups along with surveys to understand the issues contributing to the racial disparities in our prison system. Through our research, we discovered that one of the key factors contributed to the over-incarceration of black and brown people who make up currently seventy-eight percent of the jail population were policies related to detainers' violations and the Philadelphia Risk Assessment Tool. Once we identified these critical variables, we took action by launching Straight Outta Trouble program. This initiative was designed to combat the racial disparities in our local prison system by addressing three main areas. Supporting people with detainers, helping individuals reengage with probation officers, and advocating for early termination of probation. Since its inception, Straight Outta Trouble has made significant strides. We supported a hundred and thirty-one people apply for early termination and we also helped eighty-nine people reengage with their parole officers. We've helped hundreds of people get warrants lifted and get back on track, find unemployment and supporting their families and make better decisions for the future. But despite these successes, we face significant challenge, a data and policy deficit. We have worked relentlessly to understand the policies governing detainers. We continue to face resistance in our efforts to obtain the necessary information from our justice partners. In December twenty twenty-four, right to no request was denied, leaving us with no clear understanding of how to move forward. These policies and data points are crucial, not only to the progress of our community, but also for the future of our city. I don't want to be an adversary, but my goal is to build strategies to reduce jail population and provide support. Right? And so I seen that yellow light. I want to thank our justice partners for submitting data, but we still have a lot of work to do. And I ask for your support in passing a resolution that will bring the courts to the table to discuss these policies and procedure for lifting detainers' and addressing detainers' issues. Together, we can build a system that prioritize equity, accountability, and second chances.
Thank you, Dr. Simmons. Can the ladies of SWAG just please stand? Thank you for your hard work on this issue. In my former life, we would call a detainer a dipsy, but that's a different conversation. So go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Malcolm Musgrove. I'm the Vice President of Mariki and I'm here to talk about two city initiatives, new initiatives, that have started in the City of Philadelphia. They are Mayor Parker's initiatives. One is the Wellness Center and one is the Wellness Village. Both are to combat the opiate epidemic that we are facing in the City of Philadelphia. It is taking a holistic approach. It is taking a holistic approach to treatment at both locations. Sorry about that. Taking a holistic approach to treatment at both locations, looking at not only the behavioral health, which includes the mental health and substance use disorder, but also looking at the physical health, the social determinants of health, so food insecurities, housing, job readiness, vocational programs to help people on their road to recovery. I'm preaching to the choir. As you know, when you're recovering, if you don't have a home, your chances of recovery diminish. If you are food insecure, your chances of recovery diminish. If you are not getting the proper health care that you need, your chances of recovery diminish. And incorporating all of those at both of those locations will help us support and combat the opiate epidemic that we have in the city of Philadelphia. And we would like to invite you to come out to see both locations, 265 East Lehigh and 7979 State Road. Everyone is welcome to come out and see these two programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vincent Scavion, Jeremy Blattstein, and Keir Bradford-Grey.
I'm Vince Scavoni. I am the CEO of Caring for Friends. We are an all-volunteer nonprofit that provides food and friendship to Philadelphians, and we've been doing so for fifty years. We serve homebound, we've been providing food, we serve homebound seniors and disabled with our meals programs, kids and families in need with our community partners' food-covered programs. We serve all Philadelphians. Our organization was founded by one woman, a mother, like many of you, who had a deep faith in God and a dream. She believed that no one should be hungry or alone in a world of caring people, and many tens of thousands of volunteers have been helping share their benefits with all the people of Philadelphia. You know, Philadelphia is the poorest of all our large cities. The numbers across Philadelphia are particularly bad. Twenty-two percent of people in our city are still food insecure. We're doing a lot, but we're not doing enough. Our seniors have it particularly worse. It's up to thirty percent, twenty-eight percent for our seniors who are living alone, many of them food insecure, having to choose between medicine, rent, and food. And everybody here knows how much food has gone up and how difficult it is. And many of them are also disabled. They're not mobile. They can't shop. They can't cook, stand and cook. Anybody who has aging parents can appreciate this, as we take care of them. It's really hard. We provide them frozen meals with our volunteers all across the city. We're currently providing that for about 10,000. There's probably 30,000 more we need to help. And we need to do more and better for the generation before us. We also provide food for kids and families in need. All right? Kids have it really bad. Thirty percent are food insecure. That number is higher among every minority across this city. All right? Kids often get their best meal at school, but eighty percent of them don't get any meals during the summer. Even though we have many centers, we don't have enough. They do not get meals when we have a holiday. There's not even a program for that, and there's not enough after-school programs for them. We work with organizations, faith-based community organizations, many elected officials where we know people call when they are hungry and alone. And together, we can do something about that. So we appreciate the time to highlight this example and ask everybody to see we can chip in, provide more funding, more programs, and more people. Thank you.
Jeremy Blattstein, Keir Bradford-Grey, and then Lynn Landis.
Hello, City Council. Council President Johnson, my name is Jeremy Blattstein. I'm here in support of Bill Number 250014, because you know what we're talking about in 2025, people? Housing, 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 housing. That's what we're talking about. But everyone wants to talk about limits, not how we're building more supply. But we're first going to talk about the Philadelphia Land Bank. Everyone wants to talk about the Land Bank, so let's do it. How do you get land from the Philadelphia Land Bank for Turn the Key? You go to the Land Bank website, you find land that says it is available. You put together an application. What's in the application? You know, a budget, a funding source, plans. You hold a community meeting, maybe you hold two community meetings. Then the Land Bank staff qualifies your application. How long does that process take? Three to six months. Then what? Oh, yeah, the Land Bank Board votes on the qualified applications. Then what? It gets transmitted to Philadelphia City Council. Then what? Technically, any member of Philadelphia City Council can introduce the resolution to move this land to build the houses, but because of everyone's favorite thing, councilmatic prerogative, only the district member does it. How much money is spent at that point? Twenty thousand dollars. So we had two members of Black Squirrel do this process. And then what happened? Councilman Jay Young decided not to introduce the resolutions. So you have two African-American developers who spent $20,000 to build houses that are not building houses anymore. If we're going to solve this affordable housing problem in Philadelphia, we need to get serious about streamlining this process. We, I hear everyone saying we're going to cap this, do this, this, but because of council matic prerogative, each and every one of you want to rule district by district. That's not going to work. Straight up, right? Like, we can't have ten sets of rules. So the A rule, the A you rule that Councilwoman Gattie introduced today, phenomenal, but we needed that on steroids, right? We need to do that on every lot in Philadelphia. It should be legal to build two units on every single lot in Philadelphia. And finally, let's do it. Raise your hand if you wrote SEPTA in the last week. Aw, thank you. Our council people, maybe next week, and oh, yeah. I guess I have to do it. E-L-G-S-E-S Eagles. Go Birds! Thank you, we're going to the Super Bowl. And Councilman Johnson, we writing SEPTA soon? All right, I'll reach back out. You said you'd follow up, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Good morning, Council. My name is-
Good morning, Keir Bradford. How are you?
Good.
Welcome to City Council.
Thank you. It feels so good to be on this side instead of being in the hot seat. So this is really good. But I am here in support of Bill 250027, and I don't even think I need three minutes because Reverend Michelle did a phenomenal job of really articulating the reasons why this bill is so important. I would just lend my voice to say this: The best outcomes that we got in our justice system is when community was informed and they were able to work with their people to get them to understand the process of the system. We had phenomenal outcomes that actually increased public safety. So I would just encourage us to continue down that path. The community not only is informed but empowered. The things that we have been doing together with Reverend Michelle have been going on since 2015, and she has taken this by storm, and people have gotten fairer and better outcomes from this system. So I want to thank you so much for giving me the opportunity just to speak on this resolution today. I think our city and our communities are much better when we work together in participation. Thank you.
We have Lynn Landis, then Wanda Walker, and Obona Haggins.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org and a registered Republican. I oppose Resolution 250021 that condemns President Trump and his choices for positions within his administration. This is a shockingly ill-conceived resolution, considering that we've just emerged from four years of the nightmare that was the Biden administration, where President Biden was literally asleep at the switch for much of that time as he descended into dementia, a fact that was kept from the public by his administration officials. And what was their track record? Well, there was Dr. Fauci, who turned a manageable epidemic that he himself had caused into a dystopian catastrophe, as he prescribed a medical response that proved to be a euthanasia protocol for thousands. He also encouraged the closing down of life as we know it in America, urged censorship of those who didn't agree with him, while coercing millions of Americans to take an experimental vaccine whose tragic consequences are still being felt today by untold numbers. Then we have Defense Secretary Austin and his withdrawal from Afghanistan, which resulted in the murder of American soldiers and citizens, as well as the loss of a military base and $80 billion with equipment that is now under the control of the Taliban. Worst of all, there was a direct attack on our nation's sovereignty as Secretary of Homeland Security Mayorkas aided and abetted the invasion of millions of illegal immigrants from around the world to cross both our northern and southern borders. And throughout this time, Biden administration officials practiced the art of identity politics, which further divided our nation, as they preached the gospel of diversity, equity, and inclusion, which became, in reality, preferential treatment for some, exclusion for others, and entitlement for those of the right race, sexual identity, and disability. Isn't it time to turn the page and give President Trump and his new team a chance? Let's support law and order, meritocracy, and common sense for a change. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Wanda Walker. Good morning, beautiful people.
Good morning.
Please be respectful to everybody that speaks, even if they're Republican like myself, because we have things to say, and that's the only way we're going to come to a conclusion and a consensus. So I'm going to talk about the Land Bank bill and piggyback off of what Jeremy said, and he's talking about councilmatic prerogative. I don't necessarily disagree with him, but I don't think taking away councilmatic prerogative altogether would be a good idea. There's not a week that goes by that I don't get a phone call about a senior or someone losing their home, but mostly seniors. So I come here every week, and I talk about generational wealth. There is no house that's more affordable than the house your grandmom or granddad was going to pass on to you. So yes, we need affordable housing, and the best way to get that is to stop displacing people out of their homes. So I believe that seniors, after thirty years of paying taxes and a mortgage, should not have to pay property taxes. You should not have to be low-income or poor to benefit from any type of tax program. Simply said, if we don't charge them property taxes, they're not losing the generational wealth that our community desperately needs to be passed on so that we have seed money to work and leverage to get to the next level. So please consider doing something in reference to all the properties that are going to the Land Bank and finding a way to put in a program so those families might be able to qualify and get their homes back. That's pretty much it. I'll see you next week. Thank you.
Obona Haggins?
Good morning. Obona Haggins, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. Good morning, Council. I rise today not to condemn President Donald J. Trump, but to condemn this resolution for its failure to recognize a historic moment for the American freedmen. This council seeks to rebuke the president while ignoring the fact that he has done what no other president has done. He's dared to acknowledge that the Fourteenth Amendment is exclusively the progeny of the emancipated. For generations, this misinterpretation has cost the American freedmen community trillions of dollars. This is not a moment for condemnation. This is a moment of celebration. Imagine if the newly freed slaves had rejected the Thirteenth Amendment that was signed by President Abraham Lincoln just because they thought that he was racist. How foolish would that have been? The only thing that mattered was that the result was the end of chattel slavery. To my fellow council members, I ask, how many of you are American freedmen? How many of you are American freedmen? Right? Number two, why aren't you standing up for this historic announcement? Is it because Donald Trump is a Republican? Abraham Lincoln was a Republican too. Why is council condemning the first sitting president to affirm the rightful inheritance of Black Americans, American freedmen, under the Fourteenth Amendment? This resolution does not serve the people. It serves political distractions. The real work is establishing the Office of Freedmen Affairs right here in Philadelphia, ensuring that this acknowledgement leads to tangible policies that repair the economic and structural damage inflicted on our people. We must focus on what matters: the Reconstruction Amendments, the Civil Rights Act of 1866, and securing economic and political power for the American freedmen. Not DEI, not empty resolutions, not partisan distractions. We must focus on what matters. I reject, let me say that again, I reject this resolution and call for council to do the same. It's time to stand for the American freedmen and seize this moment for what it truly is: an emancipation moment, a recognition of what has been ignored for decades. Obona Haggins, unseated council president and president of the Philadelphia Reparations Coalition for American Freedmen. Thank you.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
Well, that concludes today's public comment, period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250014?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3862 and 3864 Pens Grove Street and 1118 North 39th Street located in the Third Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gattie for motion regarding Resolution Number 250014.
Thank you, Council President. I call for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 250014 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250018?
A resolution amending Resolution Number 240834-A, which the council adopted on December 19th, 2024, entitled "Proposing an Amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to Provide for the Creation of the Philadelphia Prison Community Oversight Board and the Office of Prison Oversight and Providing for the Submission of the Amendment to the Electors of Philadelphia to Make a Technical Correction."
Counsel, be at ease for a second. The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion regarding Resolution Number 250018.
Thank you, Council President, and again, want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Warwick, for his work on this particular legislation. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 250018 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250019?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title two, 623R North 55th Street, 5110 Harland Street, 5122 through 24 Harland Street, 2715 North Dover Street, 2715 North Dover Street, 2731 North 29th Street, 2738 West Silver Street, 2703 West Sterner Street, 2714 West Sterner Street, 2717 West Sterner Street, 2627 West Lehigh Avenue, 2629 through 31 West Lehigh Avenue, 2623 West Silver Street, 2726 West Sterner Street, 2705 West Sterner Street, 2710 West Sterner Street, 2723- 2723 West Sterner Street, 2731 West Sterner Street, 2655 West Silver Street, 2626 West Silver Street, 2720 North 28th Street, 2715 West Sterner Street, 2749 West Sterner Street, 2733 West Sterner Street, 2647 Wesley High Avenue, 2711 West Sterner Street, 2628 West Silver Street, 2655 West Seltzer Street, 2820 North New Kirk Street, 2758 North 28th Street, 2719 North 29th Street, 2602 West Sterner Street, and 2651 West Silver Street in the Fourth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 14-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution number 250019.
Affordable housing, build, baby, build. I move for the adoption.
It has been moving property second that Resolution number 250019 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution number 250021?
A resolution condemning President Donald J. Trump for his selection of underqualified cabinet, sub-cabinet, and leadership nominees to further advance his Project 2025 agenda and undermine the integrity of American democracy, equity, human rights, and freedom.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau for a motion regarding Resolution number 250021.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second that a Resolution number 250021 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution number 250027?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold a hearing on detainer policy in the City of Philadelphia and calling on the First Judicial District of Pennsylvania to provide an overview of its policies and practices regarding detainer issuance on individuals with post-trial probation and parole sentences.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion regarding Resolution number 250027. The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Mr. President, on behalf of Councilmember Brooks, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property second that Resolution number 250027 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Just for a matter of business, Deputy Whip, Minority Whip O'Rourke, is the Minority Leader excused for absence for the day or she just stepped out with all votes recorded for the day?
If the appropriate motion is to ask for a leave of absence for the day and a vote for aye on all bills as well.
That's correct. It will be duly noted on her behalf. Thank you, sir. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution number 250029?
A resolution recognizing the devastation caused by the wildfires to the Los Angeles community, the accelerating rate of climate change, and calling on the City of Philadelphia to provide the funding and resources necessary to fully update and implement human-centered climate mitigation and resilience plans.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for a motion regarding Resolution number 250029.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property second that Resolution number 250029 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Bill number 240817?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by counsel proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the creation of the Philadelphia Prison Community Oversight Board and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill had been read on two different days. The question now is, should the bill pass finally? Would the chief clerk please call a rule?
Councilmember Phillips.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Landau.
Aye.
Councilmember Lasada.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks was aye. Councilmember Harity.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Aye.
Councilmember Squilla.
Aye.
Councilmember Ahmad.
Aye.
And Council President Johnson.
Aye. The ayes are 16, the nays are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. We will now consider any additional resolutions on today's calendar. Will the clerk please read the title of the first resolution?
A resolution honoring the Juvenile Law Center on its 50th anniversary introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring the Office of Clean and Green for their exceptional contributions towards a cleaner, greener Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion.
Cleaner and greener Philadelphia. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Licenses and Inspection and the Committee on Public Safety to hold hearings on enforcement against drug paraphernalia stores introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The clerk please read the title of the next resolution.
A privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of Sid Booker, a Philadelphia businessman and community icon who left an indelible mark on North Philadelphia and beyond introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Councilmember Bass.
The Chair will ask for a standing silent vote. Councilmember O'Neill. Councilmember O'Neill, can you just join us for a second on this resolution, please? Can we all stand? Voice vote on behalf of the late, great Sid Booker.
Counsel President, on behalf of Councilmember Bass and the broader Philadelphia community, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing Patricia Riley, Septus' first female conductor, introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the rise of cardiovascular disease as the world's leading cause of death and disability and supporting the recognition of February 2025 as American Heart Month introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for a motion on the resolution.
Counsel President, as somebody who suffers from heart disease, I believe that we should get it out there. It's one of the number-one causes of death in our nation. And while those numbers are high in my category, they're actually even higher for African-American males. So I would advise that all of us get tested whenever you can. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has a moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring January as National Poverty in America Awareness Month and recognizing the severe conditions of poverty that many Americans experience day to day introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Counsel President.
It has a moving property second that the resolution is adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Technology and Information Services to hold hearings regarding the operation of the Philadelphia 311 Non-Emergency Hotline and its engagement with city departments introduced by Councilmember Driscoll.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a motion on the resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Counsel President.
Second. It has been moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing January 29, 2025 as the Lunar New Year and celebrating the cultural and historical significance of Philadelphia's Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair enthusiastically acknowledges Councilmember Nina Mott.
Thank you, Counsel President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has a moving property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Counsel President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you all. Try to keep it tight. I do, but I am sharing both for myself as well as my leader. So I'm going to start with hers, remarks that she did have prepared for the wonderful swag community that was here earlier. These are the words of Minority Leader Kendra Brooks. Thank you, Counsel President. I want to recognize and thank the Reverend Dr. Michelle Simmons, founder and CEO of Why Not Prosper, an organization devoted to sheltering and supporting formerly incarcerated women as they transition to life outside the walls. She also serves as the Community Advisory Committee co-chair for the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge, working to reduce Philadelphia's high rate of incarceration and its devastating impact on Black and Brown communities. With the resolution that passed today, authorizing a hearing on the First Judicial Court's use of detainers, we do hope to shed light on practice that prevents people from rejoining their families and rebuilding their lives. Also want to acknowledge the uncertainty and fear that many people in our city have been feeling this week. With every headline about raids or funding cuts, the level of anxiety goes up. And Philadelphians are looking to us, their elected leaders, for answers. All week, constituents have been reaching out to all of our offices with questions. What will ICE raids mean for my mixed-status family? How will federal funding cuts impact my rent or my child's school or my medication? People are scared, and they're looking for leadership. She wishes to thank all of her colleagues who did join her in a statement yesterday committing to protect our immigrant communities. The statement cannot be it, though. That can't be the end. We need leadership at every level in order to take on the threats aimed at our city right now. As we learned at last week's hearing called by Member Landau, our city's level of preparedness for these challenges is still an open question to too many in Philadelphia. And we share that. And in the coming weeks, we do plan to work with many of you to strengthen protections for our workers, for our immigrant and LGBTQIA+ communities, and the countless Philadelphians who benefit from federally funded programs. We cannot stay silent while our communities are attacked. And Philadelphians deserve to know how we plan to meet this moment. And with that, she concluded her statements with a thank you. Want to just share two things for my part. I often hear, and actually, I've heard all week and share Leader Brooks's concern about the reports, the calls, the reachouts as it relates to the various raids and other things that have been coming down from this administration. One thing as an organizer I used to share with folks all the time was that the last thing that we do in a functioning democracy is vote. There is democracy that takes place before voting, and there's democracy that takes place after we vote. And I just want to lift up two things in the spirit of economic democracy, two forms of economic democracy that I think are worth celebrating or acknowledging today. The first one is with the resolution that we did lift up today, the resolution, excuse me, that calls or declares alongside the United Nations here in the City of Philadelphia, the year 2025 is the year of cooperatives. Cooperatives. This resolution celebrates local worker-owned co-ops and it's being introduced by our team as well with a cosponsor, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, who I believe is in Washington today. But also, this resolution was cosponsored by Councilmember Squilla, Leader Brooks, Leader Gilmore Richardson, and many, many more. We are excited to celebrate with them. For those that don't know, the UN Resolution on Co-op stressed that cooperatives, in their various forms, promote the fullest possible participation in the economic and social development of local communities, whose inclusion strengthens economic and social development and contributes to the eradication of poverty and hunger. I believe that this, too, is democracy, not just voting, but engaging to help shape our communities and make sure that we are alleviating the pressures of poverty. I'm excited to take this on this year and proud to join the UN in declaring 2025 the year of cooperatives. Colleagues, this, too, is what democracy looks like. I also want to lift up a great, really historic win recently, Whole Foods Union. This is the first Whole Foods Union making this union election truly historic. I think the final tally vote was 130 to 100. These are folks who have been fighting for a union under union-busting conditions. Amazon has done everything they possibly could to keep them from unionizing, and yet they were successful. A lot of folks don't know what to make of all this new era of union drives and service work from local coffee shops to billion-dollar corporations. And frankly, being frank, our local labor movement does not support them uniformly. But I have to just say, it is an immense honor to represent so many people, folks from all walks of life, but especially so many young folk, who aren't afraid to experiment with this system, this governance system that they've been given and in order to build a better democracy and a better way of life. I think it really does help us become a better city and ultimately a better country. When our unions win, when we celebrate cooperatives, it helps us to live into the values that we profess. Thank you, Counsel President. Nothing more today.
Thank you. Speech on behalf of the majority. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President. First this week has been very challenging for many of us. But I wanted to pause to extend my thoughts and prayers to all of the victims who were lost in the tragic plane and helicopter crash last night and express deep gratitude, thanks, and appreciation to all of the first responders and officials who are working collaboratively to ensure that there is a response to that unfortunate tragedy. And I also wanted to lift up Mayor Muriel Bowser for the work that she was doing throughout the night and into the morning. And also to the families who tragically lost their homes here in Philadelphia in an unfortunate house fire yesterday. But I wanted to remind everyone, even with all of that going on, that there is a wonderful opportunity for our young people to have a wonderful experience this weekend. We know that a book can open up the opportunities of the world. And so this Saturday, February 1st, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Pennsylvania Convention Center, there will be the 33rd Annual African-American Children's Book Project. There will be a number of African-American children's book authors and many others there to ensure that our young people are exposed to literature and exposed to all the wonderful books that will be on display throughout the convention center. And I just wanted to remind each of my colleagues that each of you have copies of the books that we received via Vanessa Loy Scambati and also the authors who are with us today, Injamar Nicholas. We have Leon, Worst Friends Forever, and Leon the Extraordinary. So I hope that you can share these books with young people in your districts and/or in your areas and help to open up their literary world. So please, take your young person to the Pennsylvania Convention Center this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. Thank you, Counsel President.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsi Lazada.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just want to thank some of my colleagues who have reached out regarding the ICE raids that took place in the district. Publicly, I want to say that if you are truly willing to help, the help that we need right now is to make sure that this vulnerable population receives the information regarding the resources and how to protect themselves and their families. And so I ask that you please share the information. My staff has Know Your Rights cards. We have additional flyers. We have a resource book that we're putting out. If you really want to help... If you really want to help, that is what we need to do right now. So many of these residents are truly afraid. They're not sending their children to school. They're not showing up to work, and we need to make sure that they have all of the resources and the information that they need to be able to protect themselves. The mayor has said many times already that we continue to be a welcoming city. You know, we are not being notified of where these agents are going to be showing up and when and how. We do know that there are people, innocent people, people who have been here for many, many years, have established a life here, who have been contributing citizens to our city and who are being caught up in all of this. And we are outraged, too, right? But the best way to provide the support to this community right now is to make sure that they are connected to the resources, that they know where to get the answers to their questions from the appropriate professionals in a language that they understand. And that doesn't mean just in Spanish, right? You know, I want to make sure that folks understand that I'm not just advocating for Latino immigrants. This is, yes, this is a citywide problem, and there are many immigrants who don't just speak Spanish in our city. And so we need to make sure that all of these documents are translated into languages that they understand and that each one of us does what we can quietly, preferably, to make sure that these resources get into the hands of those who need it the most. My office, again, is available to provide those materials if you don't have them. There are other groups who have these resources, Juntos, New Sanctuary, Esperanza, all of those organizations who deal with this population on a day-to-day have all of these resources, and they have also said that they are willing to help support. If you don't want to come to my office, please reach out to those offices. But right now, it is absolutely urgent that we connect people with resources. All the other nonsense is unnecessary. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I had every intention of talking about the updates of CPAC and preparing you for the new recommendations that will be before Council to vet. The hard work of Caroline Stack over there was put in numerous hours, but I have to put a pause on that. Now, I'm probably secretly unknown to be one of the funniest boys in city council. Like, I'm hilarious. I crack myself up. But jokes stop being funny once they get elected. And as we watched the clown car unload at the White House, the ominous threat that it represent shows that it was premeditated. They authored the 2025 Plan first. On their first day, they had prepared 300 executive orders. They automatically turned off spigots of funding. And what is dangerous is they had no idea what intended and unintended consequences there was, because as we said, Mr. President, the rain falls on the just and the unjust alike. And so those cuts were hitting, and I apologize to my colleague here, make exception for him, but there are Republican states that were going to bear the brunt of those decisions. So they had to back up, take a step back, thank God. Now, what we have to do, what we must prepare for is the three Cs. We must fight them in chambers, just like this, at the state level, challenging their laws, challenging their budgets, making amendments to our laws to accommodate our vulnerable. We must fight them in courts where the NAACP, SPRAZO, or whatever organizations are out there, join their legal prowess and file briefs to stop some of this, challenge some of this, at least slow it down till we get a grasp on them. They release those things so fast, so furious, it's like in the barber shops, they got flared on. We didn't know how to block half of the stuff that was coming down the pipe. So we need to make them pause sometimes so we can digest and process what they are trying to do to us. I will also say to you that as a Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, while back, I heard something that now makes all the sense about the vulnerable. There was a case where a illegal immigrant, quote, was renting from a homeowner. He said, "I will call ICE if you do not satisfy me sexually." That's beneath human. That's, we cannot sit back and abide this. So no matter how left some of my colleagues are or how right some of my colleagues are, we have a greater threat, because as they say in The Game of Thrones, winter is not just coming, it is here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Very well said. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to speak to the resolution I introduced today, which is to recognize January 29th, 2025, as the start of the Lunar New Year. I wanted to honor the arrival of the new year as the year of the snake. This time will bring wisdom, intuition, caring, intelligence, and problem-solving, which are all vital for the work we conduct in council. This time will also symbolize luck, prosperity, and happiness in our homes and communities. Let us continue to appreciate the rich cultural tapestry that connects us and allows us to share traditions, happiness, and a stronger sense of community. Happy Lunar New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President. I want to start by thanking this body for taking bold action last year in implementing Phase 1 of my defying displacement campaign. We cracked down on illegal discrimination against tenants using housing vouchers. We mandated that revenue generated by, quote, "payments in lieu of affordable housing" get reinvested back into communities experiencing overly dense development. Voters in the May 2025 primary will have the power to compel the city to fully fund our Housing Trust Fund. I urge everyone listening here and at home to vote yes in support of safe, stable, and affordable housing. And we enacted my low-income property tax freeze, which stopped property taxes from increasing for eligible and enrolled homeowners. Thanks to Councilmember Landau, the Department of Revenue recently extended the deadline to apply for this tax freeze to February 28th. Do not leave money on the table. If you are a low or no-income homeowner, call your city council member to learn how to freeze your property taxes. I've been told that 2025 is all about housing. I'm excited to get the ball rolling by introducing Phase 2 of defying displacement, which cuts red tape for developers and homeowners who want to be a part of the affordable housing solution. At our current pace, it will take us more than 200 years to build enough affordable housing to meet the need, and all of us know that this is time we do not have. That's why this body needs to slash unnecessary red tape that slows down the development of affordable housing and drives up our housing cost. First, the city should routinely expedite zoning and building permit applications for affordable housing projects. LNI does have a prioritized review process, but it is only available for certain affordable housing projects when requested by the developer and, quote, "to the extent LNI's capacity permits." If the city is serious about building affordable housing, we should quickly and predictably review affordable housing zoning and building permits every single time, no ifs, ands, or buts. This principle should apply to variances, too. Why does the city treat applicants who want to build in a few extra units so they can charge affordable rents, the same as those proposing a luxury skyscraper? Let's prove affordable housing is a priority by giving developers who want to do good expedited hearings in front of the ZBA for no additional fee. And to make sure developers don't abuse this fast track by promising to build affordable housing when they have no intention of actually doing so, we must empower the city to enforce conditional approvals by the ZBA. But large developments are far from the only solution to our city's housing crisis, and commercial developers should not be the only ones to profit off this work. Luckily, we have another tool that grows affordable housing, defies displacement, and empowers homeowners to build generational wealth all at the same time without changing the look or feel of our neighborhoods. Across the nation and here at home, bonus units, sometimes referred to as accessory dwelling units, help families to stay in their homes amid skyrocketing costs. But in the last decade, the city has only approved an average of one bonus unit per year. This isn't because homeowners don't want bonus units. My office consistently hears from constituents who want them but have trouble navigating the time-consuming and expensive bureaucratic process. By cutting red tape to make it easier for homeowners to take advantage of bonus units in council districts that allow them, we have a rare and frankly easy opportunity to keep families in their homes and bring new affordable homes online all in one go. That's why my legislation will allow homeowners in single-family homes to add bonus units by right in their primary residence. Granted, the change does not materially change the look of their home externally. This week, The Enquirer reported that Philadelphia is in the ninth-least affordable metro in the nation. This reaffirms that even though we have made significant progress, we cannot take our foot off of the gas. I look forward to working with this body, the Parker Administration, and every stakeholder to cut red tape and empower developers and homeowners alike to defy displacement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. So today, we passed a resolution authored by Councilmember Harity, recognizing National Poverty Awareness Month. And we all acknowledge, as my colleague Councilwoman Jamie Gaudier just mentioned, that we have, you know, there's an affordable housing issue that we have in the city, but I think we should rephrase that sometimes as, you know, we have an issue with housing that people can't afford, right? And, you know, in that resolution, it talked about how our city continues to remain the highest poorest, the poorest, biggest city amongst the most ten populous cities in the country. But let's look at why is that, right? Every state around Pennsylvania has a higher minimum wage than we do, right? New York's minimum wage is $16.50. New Jersey's is $15.49. Delaware's is $15 an hour. Maryland's $15 an hour. Ohio is $10.70. And even West Virginia has a higher minimum wage than Pennsylvania at $8.75. We will always be the largest, poorest, big city as long as our residents are only being paid $7.25 an hour. So if we can increase wages, maybe our residents will be able to afford housing in this city. And on that same note, you know, I definitely want to congratulate the United Food and Commercial Workers Local 1776 for organizing the first, the very first, unionized Whole Foods store, and it happens to be right here in the fifth council district here in the city of Philadelphia. With this new right to collectively bargain, hopefully these workers now will be able to earn a better wage, have better working conditions, and can truly be able to afford to shop at the place that they work and live in the city that they love comfortably. So with that, I believe that we continue to fight for higher wages, a higher minimum wage. We will improve the condition and lives of countless Philadelphians throughout the city. So I'll do everything in my power, and I'm sure most of my colleagues will too, to make sure that we can increase this minimum wage from $7.25 in 2025. So thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
First, I want to thank my colleague Councilwoman Jones for bringing up that really awful scenario of what you remember when you were at the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. Unfortunately, this happens all too often, that folks who are not citizens of the United States where they're working or where they're living are often threatened by their employers, by their housing providers, that these folks, that somebody would call ICE. When I ran the city's Human Relations Commission, we heard these cases all the time, and I just want to make sure that it is loud and clear to anybody listening, that is illegal. It is a form of sexual harassment, sexual discrimination. You could file a claim with the cities, the Philadelphia Commission on Human Relations, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, but it's also the reason why I held my hearing, to look at the city's readiness and commitment to enforcing the great laws that we actually have on the books here in Philadelphia to make sure that we, for the wide range of awful things that are happening to folks who are undocumented or not in the city because of racial profiling, that we make sure folks are as protected as possible, including the fact that all city employees are not allowed to ask you unless it is necessary for the thing that you are trying to get, an application for something. They are not allowed to ask you about your citizenship status. So I just wanted to make that clear so we can look at all of this holistically because it's affecting people throughout the city in every area. The second thing is, I, this is the beginning of tax month, and I do want to remind people, thank you, Councilmember Gaudier, that folks should go to claimyourmoneyphl.com. The city's claim your money tax site, sorry. That site will point you to the free tax preparers who will do your taxes for free. They are certified. They are wonderful. We just had a press conference for them. They're fantastic. If you do go to a paid tax preparer, please remember my bill from last year, the tax preparer must tell you how much it's going to cost to do your taxes upfront. So we got a lot of people leaving the earned income tax credit and the child tax credit on the table. These are thousands of dollars that we can get into the pockets of Philadelphians, even if you made just a little bit of money and you're, "I'm not going to file my taxes. I'm not going to owe anything." The federal government will give you money. Please do it. It could be, it could be up to $10,000 depending on your family size. And then finally, I want to talk a little bit just about the bills that I introduced today. Many of you know in my background as a housing and civil rights lawyer, I've been saying housing is a human right throughout my career. I've seen firsthand how hardworking people, families, seniors, people transitioning out of homelessness are blocked from housing, not because they can't afford the rent, but because they simply can't afford to move in. That's why today I'm so proud to introduce my Move-In Affordability Plan, a crucial step toward making Philadelphia a more affordable and equitable place to live. My Move-In Affordability Plan caps excessive junk rental application fees and allows security deposits to be paid in installments, lowering the overall cost of moving into a new rental unit, because it's an insurmountable hurdle for many Philadelphians with median rents in the city at $1,800 to just move into their home. These are upfront costs. We're in a housing crisis. Nearly half of Philadelphians rent their homes. Almost 50% of them are cost burden, paying 30% or more of their income just to keep a roof over their heads. And it's not just the cost of rent, it's the outrageous upfront fees that make securing housing nearly impossible for too many people. That's why we have to make changes now. These bills are common sense measures that will help renters without hurting landlords. They remove unnecessary barriers to housing and ensure that hardworking Philadelphians can access the homes they deserve. It's about ensuring that people aren't priced out of housing before they even have a chance to sign a lease. I look forward to working with my colleagues, housing advocates, landlords, and community members to get this done, because if we want Philadelphia to be a city where everyone has a fair shot, we have to start by making a city where everyone can afford a home. People are being asked for three months' rent upfront with the median rent of $1,800. That is a hurdle many can't overcome. I'd like, and so thank you for continuing this dialogue with me about these bills. Open door, as always. And I also want to commend Councilmember Driscoll on his resolution examining the operation of the 311 of the 311 non-emergency hotline and its engagement with City Department. As Chair of the Technology and Information Services Committee, as well as a city resident who has used 311 before, I'm eager to dive deeper into the subject and improve the system as much as possible with Councilmember Driscoll and all of our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Yes, sir. Just really briefly, I just want to say, today I introduced a resolution of recognizing the Clean and Green Office led by Carlton Williams. His support, Commissioner Crystal Jacobs has been also a part of the Clean and Green efforts. I just want to say, you know, Mayor Parker put together a great team, and this team has been very responsive to all of our cleaning needs in the 9th District. And I just want to let us know that when the district council members work closely with the administration, we can get a lot done with the city. And so when we're hearing from our neighbors what's happening when things are not clean, and then we contact the administration about what needs to be cleaned, and they are rapidly responding to it, is really appreciative. So more to come on us honoring and recognizing, but I just want to say, thank you so much, Clean and Green. Let's keep the efforts.
Thank you. There are no more speeches on behalf of the majority. Now, the Chair recognizes Majority Whit, Councilmember Thomas, for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 6, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. sharp.
It has a move in property seconded, the council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 6, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much, and go Birds.